Anything? Larry?
Nope, I'm all good.
Okay. All in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. Uh, adjustments to the agenda, do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight? Okay, we're gonna move forward. So the first one I have on the agenda is the cemetery. And I'm not sure that I have anybody here.
Let's make an adjustment.
I think Brent was to be here.
I think he's the only one here for the cemetery?
Yeah, so.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna postpone cemetery stuff until a later, later date?
Yep.
Okay, uh, Emily? Little Italy Road and CB Crossing.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good, Harry.
I've seen a lot of emails from you.
I know.
And it seemed like they were a little on the last minute thing here, like today I saw a lot females.
Well, you'll notice that I, then Emily was like, do you still wanna be on this email list?
Yeah, I saw one from Matt and I talked to Gary and um,
Great.
I forget whoever else was, and of course Harold's met with you.
Yeah.
And so what do you have to present for us?
Yeah, so today I'm here with Harold and this is Jessica, who's from SLR. Um, she's uh, part of the design firm that we hired uh, to do an alternatives analysis and then a hundred percent design depending on how we decide to move forward today.
Okay.
Um, and so basically what we have today are two different options for configurations. You'll recall last time we talked a little bit about combining the crossings versus not combining the crossings. So we kind of have both those scenarios. Um, and then we also have a few options for type of culvert depending on the scenario, basically. Um, and we have some cost estimates as well, although I would continue emphasizing that both, all, all options are fundraiseable, you know?
Okay.
Um, and my goal is to fundraise all of the, of the funds that the town would need to implement.
Okay.
Either or both options. It would just, um, how we choose would then dictate how long it would take to raise the funds, basically.
Hold on just a second, Larry, are you familiar what we're talking about and?
A little bit, cuz I thought Harold talked to me about it, so yeah, so I'm somewhat familiar.
Yeah, so basically the one, the, the culvert under the CBT is what we call aquatic organism barrier, which means that it has a little waterfall, um, we use the word perched to describe it. It means that brook trout, eastern brook trout, which are in that brook can't go uh, upstream to their spawning grounds in the fall. Um, so there are lots of funding sources related to eastern brook trout and opening up um, barriers to their movement. So that's how kind of, and often those culverts are also too small for the, for the um, width of the channel in general. So it can kind of um, bring more funding to a culvert, to replace a culvert than just making it bigger because it should be bigger anyways. Um, so that's kind of how the culvert was initially identified. And then the one under the Little Italy Road is not technically a barrier, but it doesn't necessarily, uh, it may not make sense to only address one of them at the same time because they're so close. Um, and it's kind of a weird area.
But it works.
But it works, as Harold has told us. Yeah, and we, yeah, we're aware of that. So yeah, Jessica brought some of these.
Yeah, do you want us to come up there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can come up.
You guys should get a little.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have to.
Harley would like, oh.
They brought us, they asked to come too.
Um, so she'll just.
Yeah, I think we was open to that.
Yeah.
And you know, we've worked on these um, culvert projects around the state and um, you know, Emily's right, but there is a lot of interest and funding available um, to, to do the project, I mean, even though it might not be the one you would pick.
It's the one the fish are picking.
Right, right, and I know as far as, as a board would, would agree that the funding is huge part of whether we would pursue this or not pursue this.
Right, and that's why I emphasize that my goal is to.
Right, so, and which we discussed this from the beginning, so.
Thank you.
And I think that's why Emily just brought it up first.
Yeah. I knew that was what you.
Money is always on the top of the.
Well, no, I just, I know I just gave you something, you know, you're into that, but uh, that's completely fine.
Yo, are you doing favors, see, it's all me.
And we have, it's, it, you know, so hard to budget, so we couldn't simulate gravel perfectly, so we just have a gray. It's not paved.
That looks awesome. Is this still a grove?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a paved road and a park, but the idea, what we're really trying to show you is that, that there could be um, the potential to put the trail and veer it over, so it's right next to the road with like a barrier, like a, you know, a guardrail or a wall or
This is great, yeah.
Something like that, so that, you know, so we just wanted you to see what it could look like um, with this little cartoon, which I know if we're not gonna turn it into a park. Um, but uh, you know, this is just a kind of an idea of what we're calling option one, which is the idea of just doing one main structure, um, one, there is some landowner, um, issues, maybe, issues is kind of the right word, but
Discussion?
Yeah, in the current configuration, you know, you own the trail and you own the road.
But not the piece.
But as soon as you start veering between the two, um, the property lines are on here, they're kind of a black line that's dashed, so there's a little triangle of land between the two. Um, and then to kind of make the turn safely, um, you know, would also kind of clip the corner of this other property. So, you know, it looks like there'd be two uh, private landowners involved with discussions in order to make this configuration work.
So I have, Harold, what did you, what did you think of this idea?
Well, I don't like it.
Okay.
I just, I mean, the railroad bed is pretty much straight.
Yep.
I like the idea of keeping it pretty much straight.
Okay.
Um, and as we talked on this last Zoom meeting, if we separate them, there's more funding for the rail trail than if we combine them. There's different funding, I should say.
But overall, one structure would be better than two cuz financially, right?
Well, that's why you let them go a little further, then we can talk some more.
We can get into that part, so, so the idea is, you know, this shows some cartoons with some colors on it, it's a bit easier to visualize. Um, the next two sheets um, kind of show the more engineering version of, you know, the cross section and the layout, you know, just to see kind of what it would look like in a bottom plan type view. Um, I think what's neat on page three here, I think what's neat is that where the trail currently is, it, it turns into um, like just a little river channel. See, there's like no culvert here, it's called SS two, so, so that's kind of part of the first option. You know, the idea that if you combine them into one structure, it's one structure maintained in the future. It's um, a little more river area restored back to what would be natural river area instead of there being a two embankment. So, um, you know, those are some of the things we were thinking about. And then if you turn to page four, then you've got like a, another color picture, uh, which shows, well, we're calling option two, which is the idea of basically replacing both structures in the same location they're in now. So, like you said, it is two structures that would be um, done, they wouldn't necessarily need to be done at the same time. Um, it wouldn't necessarily need to be done with the same funding, like, um, you know, Harold and Emily pointed out. Like there could be different funding sources, maybe one related to the trail, um, help with the trail one. Um, so this one has um, you know, different costs, you know, now you're paying for two structures, but you're not paying for kind of veering, kind of rebuilding the trail embankment.
Directing the road and trail and.
Yeah, you need to um, kind of rebuild the trail, mostly the trail to kind of bring it over, cuz it's a different elevation and I don't know, just size, so, so there are some costs associated with kind of that trail rebuilding.
Hold on a second, Dan has a.
I think we should stay with the two option. Because of the work Mike has done to get the grants for the rail trail, if you take and move that bed, it's outside of that trail.
Right, I agree, I agree.
I was wondering that with the ornaments too, like it kind of covers that circle.
I know, we've talked about the, well, we, yeah, it's a railroad bed, it can only be a railroad bed, and the road can be the road and whatever, so, so that, yep, that too, so.
So I agree with Harold, I think two is the only viable option, that we have to maintain the integrity of what we've got.
I think looking into the future, I like the idea of two.
Right, what do you think, Larry, what do you? Put me on the spot on that.
You can ask, you can ask more questions.
Pretty much, if it doesn't cost us any money, let's either one or.
Dan, right at this point, wow, I understand what Dan and Harold are saying, common sense down the road.
Right.
Keeping them separate makes, makes a lot of sense.
So what, what do you, so you guys have worked on this, what's your thoughts, what do you like? Do you have a preference?
It's more expensive to do two.
Of course.
Uh, so.
So you would shy towards, yeah, you would wanna go towards one, which.
And from a fish passage, like geomorphic, uh, so I guess I'd be like.
It would be easier.
It would be easier to maintain the integrity of the street channel with one.
But there's quite a bit of distance between the two right now, so you've gotta make up a lot of changes to bring those together.
Totally, and I didn't really, yeah, and the cost of rebuilding a trail, you know, that's definitely a cost. And so it does make the cost closer than you might think.
Right, right, okay.
In terms of combining and separating, I, the, I did hear back from not the CBT person, Matt.
Matt, Pedro, yeah.
And, yeah, but you want like, oh, he's not into it.
No, no, and I know Matt well, and I, he said pretty much, no, I don't think that's trying to share roads and whatever. You're not really sharing them because there's actually, there's a divide or between the two. No, I know, I get it, and, and it's nice that railroad bed, we already have Little Italy Road that we have to deal with with the whole share on the road and whatever.
Up further, yeah.
Up further, which is always a pain in the neck and this and that, so.
Yeah, and his whole point about um, snow on the trail and how that section often doesn't have snow, so if they have to close that piece, like that totally makes sense to me. We did, and Harold, if this works out, we have a possibility that could make the rail trail crossing less expensive because there's already some steel, what did you say, steel?
Steel I-beams.
Steel I-beams.
The town already owns.
Right, right.
That Harold owns.
She wouldn't just put two, two big box, you know, two concrete box covers, one for the railroad bed, one for.
Well, that's one of the options.
Yeah, so, so your back page, the last back page does show kind of that option. This particular view shows the arch option versus the kind of squared off box type option. But the idea where both of them would be um, replaced with a concrete arch, which is one of the three types of structures.
Like you're looking at a million dollars to pay for a structure.
Yeah.
It is what it is, you know, either do it, do it right, or do it, right?
A wood decked bridge on the railroad bed, people get all fuzzy inside when they walk across it.
I do.
But then it's another thing to maintain too, on the town's behalf, once it's done.
You gotta maintain them both.
Well, box cover, I mean, a concrete cover, it shouldn't be too much.
Reddeck it, right, every, hell, we have to redeck if we.
With wood. Wood doesn't hold up that great.
When was the last time the hatchet was redecked before this time?
Sooner than later, cuz I did it the last time or whatever, so, uh, they, they're actually, yeah, we're not getting into that, but anyways.
Okay, so it is, it is something we talked about, so if you go with concrete on both, it is, it is significantly more expensive than one combined. Uh, because now it's two, and even the concrete structures are pretty expensive. But if you do go with the concrete structure on the road, Little Italy, and then the steel beams that you own, assuming they're in good enough shape, we would need to take a closer look at them, and the wood deck, it does kind of bring the two options closer together, so it feels a little more comfortable to kind of go with what you want.
Okay.
It brings a lot of up in price.
One more person that wants to be part of this meeting, Gary Lamberton was running late and he wanted to be here to kind of have a little say and see what was what. So, from what I can hear at this point, there he is, is, is that we wanna go the route of two separate structures. And it's just a matter of trying to figure out, do we want two concrete structures or one concrete and try to save some money and use steel and, and wood, right? Is kind of where we're steering towards at this point, that's, that's what we're looking at.
That sounds like the majority of the thing.
Mike?
Um, which bridge would you have addressed first?
From like a fish perspective, which, would you go after the cross on the ground, it's very clear.
Hold, hold on just a second, let me. Isaac.
Oh, sorry, I'm late.
We're right, no, it's okay, we're right in the middle of the, we need to get you up to date, we're talking about the, the Little Italy.
Cool, thank you.
And um, the census is, instead of combining the two, is to go with two separate structures.
Yep.
Um, and now we're kind of at the point of discussion about would we go with two concrete structures for each? Or would we go for a concrete on the road and then save some money and use some town steel and wood deck the railroad bed?
Bed.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
So, that's kind of, and now Mike is.
Yeah, so to address that question, ideally we do them at the same time because of global, it would be one construction contract.
Yep.
Because of globalization costs, um, that would probably take more, like, cuz, cuz then I would have to get all the funding sources ready at the same time. Which can be a challenge, but it would save people a lot.
Yeah.
Not a lot, but that's what it's worth.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so I wanna get Gary up to date, so we've talked about the two different options of possibly having the two come together for Little Italy Road and the trail, and then splitting back off again, but that's not what, what everybody wants. Everybody, we've decided that, two separate structures. So a concrete culvert or whatever, concrete structure for the road, and then possibly another concrete structure for the rail trail, or save some money, try to save some money and use some steel we have and wooden deck it. Is that, is that, does that sound like a good idea? What's your thoughts on steel and wood decking versus putting two concrete structures in there?
We have bridges all over the place.
Okay.
I guess, what would the weight capacity be?
Could be rated, well, whatever it will make, it'll make it.
Yeah, so the concrete would definitely be the HO ninety-three. The steel beams, we need to take it closer, I don't know what their structure on here, but we thought that it would also be.
What's the span, what's the span you're talking about anyway?
Twenty-eight feet. As the riverbed, yeah, and so for the arch, that's the widest part of the arch. For the bridge, um, I think the beams are thirty-two, so it might be a little bit closer to thirty-foot span to keep your twenty-eight feet at the river level.
Okay. All right, what do you?
Which is why we're not proposing an actual culvert with a bottom, um, or a vast culvert, because, you know, I think they're more vulnerable to scour and washing out and harder to get the break out.
Well, then you're always gonna have the problem with the waterfall effect at some point versus if it's a gravel bottom, it's all gonna wash the same.
Now, this is where the Vass trail goes too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the.
Yeah, so the first, did you see the first picture, it was like combining the two together, and then.
I'm, I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the right page.
Yeah, okay, you're good.
I'm good.
There you go.
That's great.
And Zach, just so you know, if you look at the picture, it's paved, so we're paving it up.
We're not paving it up.
I should say, they're paving it up.
We're not, we're not paving it.
Just the railroad bed.
Okay, um, what, what width would be the bridge on the railroad?
The, so right now we're showing it fourteen feet, um, on the railroad.
That would be the minimum.
Yeah, I think we could, um, you know, if it's supposed to be fifteen or, you know, if that.
That would be twenty for Jesse.
Twenty starts to get more expensive, um, so it's shown at fourteen right now, but if we hear feedback from Vass that it needs to be fifteen or sixteen, then we should know that.
The new groomer is thirteen-six.
Okay, so it should be around fourteen.
Yeah.
Gets him two inches, Zach gets him two inches on each side.
If he doesn't get that fussy, if there's railings.
Yeah, he doesn't back off.
So it probably wanna be like eighteen, then if you're gonna be running almost a fourteen, no.
But you can't, if you go too much, you're beyond what the actual railroad bed is.
Okay, so it's sixteen, sixteen, a foot on either side?
It should be able to hit the middle, it's pretty straight down through there.
Yeah.
The top of the embankment is only fourteen, like, right now, the full, kind of the flat part, so there's a nine-foot ready trail, and then there's.
I mean, he, he's able to angle the blade and all, all that, lift it up over and so forth, but that was the number he gave me was fourteen.
Okay.
So everything I have now was anywhere from twelve to thirteen-six, and everything that was under thirteen-six would go on there.
This is the bridge on the CBT with that.
If fourteen is the minimum, I think is what we're shooting for.
Yeah.
So I guess if it needs to be fifteen, then we should know that in the next several weeks.
Yeah, if you think it, it doesn't stick out beyond the, if it was too much, that, that would be the safer number.
What will the road be, cuz the road's pretty shallow right now, will that be able to be opened up bigger? You know, with the Jersey barriers and everything.
It's a good question, right now we are showing it the same width, which is a wide one lane, so it's eighteen feet, um.
One lane, eighteen foot, okay, yeah, so that's.
That's wide, it's got to be wide.
That's wider than what it is now.
Is it that wide now, is it?
It's, it is eighteen.
But not with the barriers in there?
It's on the inside, inside a barrier, inside a barrier is eighteen.
Really?
It is.
The whole city.
No, especially now when you have some snow kind of squished up against the sides of these, and all that.
Okay. So I guess I would say that we're all on the same page, right, guys, about going with two separate things? And we would shoot towards going with the reason, using some steel from the town and a wood deck to save some money? And um, it sounds like a, we're go as far as that. Then when you get to, you want a bunch of money, then we'll have to, we'll have to talk about that again. But no money, let's go for it, next week?
No, like.
Okay.
Bye, you're the high go.
So, yeah, so I, I was just asking about, about the weight capacity, so I asked a question and didn't really give any background, you didn't.
So in the state of Vermont, a wood decked bridge is only rated for, I can't remember exactly, but it's ten thousand pounds or something.
Yeah, so, you probably know what I'm getting at, which is.
I pull the truck across there, I heard you.
Right, right.
Oh, pulling the what?
Vehicles going down that trail, cuz it does happen.
Like a, like a pickup truck.
Like, like.
Right, any, perfectly, any motor, any motor vehicle other than like a snowmobile, but there, we have, there are vehicles that go like this time of the year. Dark ass there gets torn up all the time cuz people wanna go mud bogging down through there, even though I'm supposed to.
We're getting rid of the mud.
What's that?
We're getting rid of the mud with our project.
Yes, no, I know, but I mean, it's, it's still.
And at some point we may have.
What I know, we close it.
Restricting that access, so that vehicles can't drive down that stuff.
Well, I thi, I think that's the question.
Especially after we get it all resurfaced and everything, the last thing we want is people flying down the railroad bed, so.
And not just that, but I think, you know, what we also don't wanna have, even if they're not supposed to, is a vehicle go across that bridge and it breaks and then the car's in the river, you know, and then we've got a whole other issue. And, and not that, not that we're expecting that to happen, but better to be, be prepared for and mitigate that as a risk than.
So to give you a little idea, Harrison, the bridge up on Aldrin, which is a wood decked bridge.
Yeah.
There's two I-beams underneath it.
Which is nothing.
This one, I think, is five hundred in the design.
Yeah.
And we drive across the cross.
So, I mean, I think we were thinking.
No, I, I get that, I know, I'm, I think it makes more sense though, for us, just thinking back to. Sort of side to this project is, you know, gating along there, you know, i- is it something we wanna incorporate into?
Definitely something we should start talking.
Talking about with the trail, uh, even the rail trail.
More and more issues with the problem.
Same thing with the railroad bed.
Yeah, I agree.
We assumed that the trail works would need to do like pickup trucks. But like, if you think it's important to have like a much bigger vehicle, like a, like a manure truck or a fire truck.
Cuz you can access from the right end and all that.
Those are heavier.
So the, the farmer at the end does use, I've seen him going down through there.
Yeah.
With uh.
Well.
Hay or something.
Yeah.
Well, he's got a one field, does he go to a field down this?
He goes a field right below my house.
He does some all the way through. Yeah, I've seen him on there multiple times.
I use that road quite a bit, turkey season, deer season.
With a pickup?
With a pickup.
Do you think that the farmer's vehicle is gonna be wider than the fifteen feet we're talking about?
No, it's not wider, but the tractors, depending on which tractor he brings, it's pretty good.
But they're, they're farmers.
But again, my question is, is it going to fit on a fifteen-foot wide?
Yes, yes, yeah. I think the hay wagon is eight-six-one. So.
I really think the groomer is too big to stand. Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
I was worried about weight of the tractor, but I think that's.
No, fiveeen.
The thing is with those vehicles is that it's a small amount, it's not like you're putting the whole vehicle on the bridge at once. It's twenty feet, twenty-eight feet long, a whole vehicle doesn't, even a log truck, only part of it fits on there. So it's not like you're being able to put the whole vehicle on there at once. It's only, you know, ten thousand pounds at the most in the, per square inch and blah, 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 and.
Um, it sounds like you have some, do you have a trail like spec with gravel, like what? Um, so that's something that we'll need to put on our plans, cuz if they're gonna like tear it up, we need to tell them exactly how to kind of rebuild it with the right, right kind of gravel.
Well, that's getting resurfaced before this will happen, so.
We have a spec for how that resurfacing is happening, so we could provide you with the way we're doing that.
That would be good.
It was a three-quarter inch length gravel.
Crowded.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have crowded on that.
Do you have like a little picture of it that you're showing?
We were asked.
Are we, just the details, are we pretty much good with this part of it? What else do we need to know?
Um, I think that's good, so there's the possibility when we have um, our structural person look at the beams, we'll have to have him come look at the beams.
Just let me know, we'll get at it.
If they're not in good enough shape, then we may need to revert back to one of the concrete options and then, depending on what Emily thinks, we might need to.
I've got two that are thirty-six inches tall.
Which you guys can work out the details, I'm just trying to be long with the beam here, so if you're done with the.
There is the possibility, we might need to come back in the case that the beams don't work out.
Okay.
And then we have to change, um, and then otherwise, um, our plan is to get everything wrapped up by early summer and then.
Come back with them.
We have a design plan that um, could go to permitting and fundraising, so.
Great.
And.
That sounds great, thanks for all the work on this and I think, I think this sounds, it's, it'd be pretty cool.
It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be nice, so.
I don't think so, as long as you've got.
Okay, do we, do you need some kind of motion to like authorize use of the beams or?
No.
Sometimes they love promotions.
Oh, really? This is grassy.
I love this area, it's beautiful.
Yeah, just if you want to.
I guess. I, I just saw a whole bunch of emails today, went.
Well, I have a little bit of a time.
Okay, so I was like, okay, I'm trying to keep up with this stuff, but. Okay, all right, and I got a Matt, I got an email from Matt, whatever, so I saw it all, yeah, it's all good, it's all good. Good, good. Okay, thank you for your time.
I'm gonna help, I agree, get that out.
Okay, uh, we, just to bring you up to date exactly.
I turned, I did not realize she was pregnant.
We approved a minute, but other than that, that's all, we got Brent as he showed up, so we're putting um cemetery things for now, cause. So.
So she has seven days.
Right.
And then asked for last year's.
So.
And I just, I know you're gonna be. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna check her right now.
Thank you, uh, highway Harold dude.
Uh, what up Pete, the mower that we rented last year for roadside mowing.
Yep.
So I called the.
Can we do that?
Prices were this year, so last year for two weeks for a hundred hours, we spent sixty-seven hundred bucks basically. This year they've gone up to ninety-eight hundred dollars for two weeks, and they've cut it down to forty-four hours a week.
Really? So that good deal is just.
Gone.
But we don't know what the new rates are gonna be either for people if they bid on the projects, so.
I mean, no decision has to be made tonight?
No, I know, but I guess we should, we should start talking about figuring out what we're gonna do, are we gonna put it out, maybe we should put it out to bid early? And see where the bids come in to, for the pricing and then compare it to what it would be to rent it and blah, 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 right? What do you guys think?
Yeah, I would say that, compare it, I mean, the problem is you put it out for bid and we decide to go, I mean, I guess the question is, is if we put it out for bid, are we able to then to say, well.
I'm sorry.
These are the prices are, but this is, we can reach.
Yeah, we don't have to take.
Yeah.
Were you talking about buying attachment to do this, like how much, no?
I don't think we did.
What was it, did you put it out to bid last year and get a price?
No.
No?
No, because we only get one bid.
Well, we did put it out to bid.
Oh, that's right, but nobody bid it and then that's when we thought about doing something different, we only get one bid, somehow I wish we could kinda uh get out a little more so we could get, there's a outfit in Linenville that does it, just to kinda get some.
Probably, cause most of them do state roads, so state roads go first.
Right, but is there any hurry, I mean, is there any hurry when it gets done as long?
There isn't places.
Some places it's pretty hard to speed, but.
That's why you gotta get more. Well, Philip and Harold will have to go out with weed whackers, right?
Last time I did that, I got stuff all in my hair.
There's an online database that you can use that, that contractors use to find bidding.
Okay.
I'm just saying that, cause like Logan has signed up for said website.
Okay.
Might be a good way to find other contractors.
I guess it would be nice to see a little, few more people at least put in a bid and see where we're at, so, and we would just go the route that makes the most sense.
I guess, do we have any equipment that could handle, that we could get an attachment for?
Oh, we got a loader, their fashion's under twenty thousand.
Yeah.
But, so this is my thinking on it, there's many other towns that have junky loaders. That hired out or whatever, if we could get one or two towns, we only need two weeks. You know, get one or two other towns together on this mower attachment?
No.
Okay.
Cause then who's gonna run it and then if it gets broken and then this and then it just becomes a big problem, it'd be one thing if the towns were like paying us. But we really, you know, it, it, it just becomes a big, I know towns have tried to share things and it just always turned into a big mess.
Is the excavator rubber tracked or steel?
Rubber.
Rubber pads.
Rubber pads, put a Velcon head on it.
That's a lot of wear and, be a lot of wear and tear.
Be a lot of wear on that thing.
It's not that big a machine either, so what could, I don't know what it could run, it'd be a lot of wear and tear on that. Larry, you must still have some connections with John Deere, don't you?
Well, I'll tell you what, we put a roadside mower on a grader once, spent about a hundred and eighty thousand and it didn't work. Town was adamant they had it, cause they had the grader that sat there, and by the time we got done, I think they use, it was Town of Franklin Vermont did it.
That wasn't helpful.
It didn't help, it was, put it where the wing, it mounted where the wing did, sounded on paper, it looked good, but, and of course, and it voided dealers warranty, there was a lot to it, that, it didn't work out.
So.
This, this ninety-eight hundred number probably not terrible, yeah, yeah.
So let's, but, but I mean, I think put it out to bid, if we could get some more bidders, see where those come in and then say, okay, well, that's ridiculous, we might as well just do it ourselves.
Yeah.
For that money, how's that sound? Okay, what else?
Uh, Philip struck within the marrow to get fixed from the winter incident yet, um, so that'll be down, hopefully just the marrow. Shouldn't take him that long to put pieces on, and that's all yet.
Okay, good, and thanks, you, I see you're hauling sand and you broke a spring and he went over and got a new spring and was able to do two of them and fix it and get back going, so that's good, thank you. Anything else for highway guys? Nope, okay, treasurer?
Okay, so I sent all the appointment list letters out, we've gotten quite a few back, um, the waste management person, um, Tim Daly has said no, so we need to find an alternative. My name is, is, um.
Who was the alternative?
Is the alternative, so.
Well, perfect, he said, sounds great, great.
Far, it was far.
I was gonna respond to Carrie's email, that I would accept that.
You would?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, I didn't talk to Tim, Tim, right?
Yeah.
I didn't talk to Tim, but one of my coworkers at the Waste Management Division State of Vermont writes the minutes for the Northeast Kingdom Waste Management Division meetings and told me what it's all about and so.
I think it's like one meeting a year, so, at dinner.
She said two, yeah, one of them's like a dinner thing or something and the other is a virtual, yeah.
Oh, okay, so you say yes?
I say yes, so I need an alternate.
That's wonderful.
Uh, Mike.
So I nominated Dan as an alternate.
He's overworked.
Yeah, so there should be an alternate, alternate person, so you need to think about that.
There wasn't for years.
Yeah, there, there wasn't for years?
Yeah, cause I, I asked if they needed, if you guys needed an alternate, you're like, oh, yeah, I've had it for a long time.
Okay.
Harley!
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right.
Can you expose last name, it probably shouldn't be the uh, the alternate.
That's okay.
Okay, um, so bank statements, they used to be going to Aaron, so now they're going to Zach, so Zach, you should be seeing lots of emails. The first part of the month.
Yep.
Um, so you should see those.
That means you gotta look at them.
I was gonna bring them down, but they're like big, huge.
So we're gonna do a little homework after a meeting, right, to go over that, okay.
Yeah.
Um, the pass.
So excited about this.
Passive building appraisal inspections is happening this year from between March and July, it's, I've never been a part of this, it's different than passive, just coming and inspecting, it's these hired appraisal inspections for the buildings.
Okay.
I don't know much more, I hope they, they want the person who is most, like you will be there for highway and Carrie and I will do this and chief will do that.
Okay.
Telling me or asking me?
I'm telling you, cause that's what's happening, I don't, I, hopefully I'll know more, but it says between March and July.
Okay.
Um, I just, I completed the workers comp audit, I completed the unemployment wage reporting just today, um, fire department phone, um, there was a block on it and I got that fixed with the phone company.
Okay, I remember, yeah.
Um, they said when they call out, it says blocked or.
Yeah, it said restricted down there.
Restr- restricted, okay, well, supposed to be fixed.
Okay.
Um, and then some of the discussion, um, back on the agenda for cemetery was there's a, their CD is maturing April third and they were supposed to come and talk about it, but. So I've been looking at rates, so nothing's been decided, but that's part of what they were going to talk about.
Okay.
So I think that's all I have for now, and then we get to other stuff.
Okay, thanks Lisa. Alright, so uh Carrie can't be here tonight, but she left a note for us all, uh softball season has started and this will cause me to miss some of the meetings this spring. Um, the update is a reminder, dog licenses are due April first, updated rabies certificate is needed with payment of ten dollars for spayed, neutered, or fourteen for non-spayed, non-neutered. Um, they have been, there have been a hundred and ten dogs licensed so far, approximately two hundred more needing to be licensed. Uh, Dan Webster will be contacting owners of all unlicensed dogs after April first deadline, plus there will be additional fees. Thank you, Dan, there, uh, there are still some eclipse glasses at the office for everyone wanting a pair, the eclipse is April eighth, starting at approximately two fourteenth. Um, for partial solar eclipse will begin, uh, begin in two, at three twenty-six, we don't even know if it's really gonna hit here all the way or much, right?
Totality won't be here, I don't think.
We're right on the line of totality, I did put my science cap on the other day to figure out what's going on.
Okay.
Uh, we're, we're not like, in like St. John's Berry has a lot more where the sun goes over, we're gonna be like ten seconds for the sun.
Oh, really, that's.
Probably be about an hour of like where it's not, it's getting dark.
Dark?
Yeah, but you'll be, so you'll be able to see the sun move, the moon move across the sun the whole time.
That's, that's.
Or blind. I think it's gonna be cloudy too.
Well, of course, and then it says.
It's gonna be cloudy.
A total eclipse will darken the daytime sky lasting about three minutes, this will occur, um, partial eclipse until around four thirty-seven PM, so three twenty-six, okay.
About two hours.
Two hours, school is dismissing early on this day, the state is predicting a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand extra cars on the road. Some emergen- emergency management people are urging people to stay home, have plenty of supplies and be ready for congested roadways, is it really gonna be that?
No, can we make this a holiday this year?
How could it be that?
They recommend stay home, don't go, don't leave your house, I mean, they're recommending stay off the road.
But everybody's coming to Vermont.
That's what they say.
So we told the state workers not to go to their offices.
Oh, yeah, we're not allowed to go in, I work for the state, we're not allowed to go in.
Wow, well, I hope it's, is amazing as they think it will be, I guess.
It's gonna be raining.
Of course, always.
Stop it! Uh, invoice from uh Red Tea Kettle for the summer flowers to approve, which I have here, BMU school budget vote will be Monday, April fifteenth, from ten AM to seven PM by Australian ballot taking place in the gym. The informal meeting will be Thursday, April eleventh at BMU at six, the warning is posted on the website, we'll have, I have not received ballots yet, I will be working on the local emergency management plan. For your review and then submitting that to the state by May first, thank you, Carrie?
When did she, what was the date?
Uh, fifty, do you need to?
Uh, I could grab a copy from her if you don't mind.
You can have it.
Oh, thanks.
Sure.
Budget, what did we budget for flowers last year or for this year?
I haven't found the budget down, it's.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, um, property upkeep, I wouldn't think we have plenty on the budget, but.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
That falls under other things.
Can you find that, please? So I, we, we just need to make a motion for approval of that, but I hope, that's what, I'll check.
Oh, you're looking at last year's or this year's?
I'm trying to look at this year's.
I could look at it if you want me to.
Wages property means?
Town beautification, do you see that, should be right around there.
Town, we don't know where my stuff, yeah, it's here somewhere. I've not seen it, but I think we had budgeted enough to cover that.
Yeah.
I don't remember what it was last year, though. Beautification, two thousand dollars. Thirteen.
Thirteen seventy.
So that's under where we budgeted, so that's good, yeah.
That's good, I make a motion, we accept the tea kettle flower maintenance contract for thirteen, for thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred and seventy dollars.
Thirteen hundred and seventy dollars.
Yep.
I second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's good.
Yep.
We don't charge anything else to that account, I don't think. That's it, isn't it?
We've done a few things, town beautification, so we've done a few other things.
Like bark mulch.
So.
Yeah, bark mulch.
We got six hundred and thirty dollars left in that budget.
It should be. Okay. Assistant assessor, which Dorothy isn't here tonight, um, I have a poll there from her with stuff in it, um, updates. I have attached two POs for approval, we are planning to have a tablet for the person we hire to take pictures this summer, as the pictures are taken, they will be loaded into the property card. I guess I would have some discussion on that, I didn't know we were getting involved and we talked about hiring somebody to do pictures.
Right.
So I don't know why we would, we would need to buy a tablet for that, I guess.
It's something that um Nimr, I believe, recommended to her.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
What do you think about that, Gary, is that what we should do for this?
I mean, I, I, all I did is look at what they, what, what they recommended, it's the, you know, it's a high-end um laptop tablet.
Why would they take better pictures than cameras?
I think it's for integration, so if you figure with your phone and you have to email the T D N.
I've got a camera with a, with a memory card.
Well, then you have to transfer everything.
You have to.
You don't think it goes on the tablet, is this a program or not?
I think, yeah, we, maybe a little bit more to understand that, is there some sort of application for that?
I think that process of they'll be using to uh, to, if it's going into Nimr's cloud or, or it gets uploaded here to our folder, not sure the process she followed.
Well, it sounds like we should have a little more discussion before we just.
She told me that the person taking the pictures would be uploading that on the computer, that's what I was told, so this tablet here is.
I guess we need to have a little more discussion of that before we go into.
I mean, just, I know like for me, from like itching and stuff, there's apps that I use.
Right.
That actually you have to put all the information in, so that when it uploads it, it's all together.
Okay.
So there's no confusion.
So, yeah, so I'm wondering if there's an app that.
Yeah, what I was talking about is, one biggest problem I have is identifying what the picture is. Right, uh, that's, it, it, it's a huge problem, like, when I went out and did flood damage, I used an app to give you the GPS location.
One hundred dollars.
But there's other apps that can better identify, either the National Insurance Agency or whatever, that.
Well, you know, I think that, that I had thought about.
Well, let me finish.
Costing the app to be able to take and write down the actual physical address, then take your pictures, go to the next place, do the same thing.
Well.
But if it's an app or, or you can just.
I think, I think we'll have more discussion about this, but, and the other discussion was, is we talked about eight thousand dollar, you know, um, thing to do this and then this is eleven hundred, is that on top of the eight thousand or is that part, you know what I mean, like, well, I don't know.
Well, we haven't even put it out the bid yet, we just posted money.
So I guess we need to have more discussion.
Right, but if we're, if we're putting it out the bid, I would.
You'll have to explain the process.
I would think if it was going out the bid, then you take your own pictures and you submit them, you don't, I don't know, what, I guess we need to have a little more.
I don't know if it really will go out to bid, I think it'll just be posted.
Right, posted, right, right.
Not that much money.
Right, but even still, we should, we should make a plan before we.
Well, then.
I, I gave her that.
Oh, okay, oh.
I already know the capital, I just don't know the process is gonna be used to, with the, with, you know, get it to Nimr. Organizing and what it means we need to do. I haven't asked any questions, he just told me that Nimmer recommended this, can you give me a price on this, I did.
Okay, 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 well, let's, I think we'll, yeah, we'll just do some more before we go out and.
Know how it's gonna be implemented.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, but I mean, it's eleven hundred for the tablet and then another seven hundred to get it set up by Nimmer.
On top of the, yeah, okay, we're gonna have more discussion on this, we'll have to check in with Dorothy. Uh, she also said, uh, we have submitted the data quality study, uh, to property value and review twice. There is more data they want including, included in the report, we hope to finalize that next week. I plan to work on the two ads for our position in the next couple of weeks. Two ads in, for what position?
For that, the picture position.
Oh, okay, okay, five hours a month in the office and someone to take property photos.
So.
So, five hours a month in the office.
I thought it was just for taking pictures.
I think it's two separate things, but I'm, I'm not sure.
I plan to work.
I, yeah, cause what we talked about with the picture thing was it would be. Somebody, yeah, standalone contracted person to do that.
I think she's thinking of two.
Separate things. No, okay, we'll have to, we'll have to, uh, check in with Dorothy and get.
Try to figure out what.
Figure out what's going on with that.
Cause I mean, if, she, she has this coming out of the reappraisal reserve funds, it's not even that. Additional money, that's what's written on here. For the, for the tablet and it does look like, it does look like there's an app and other things.
But that's gonna be almost a two thousand dollar expense.
Well, what?
I don't know.
I, that's what I don't know, I don't.
Somebody said something about she gets it might know.
I, I don't know what I don't know, but it may be that it includes what they're setting up.
Yeah.
May include, you know.
Those ones I've used, when somebody, had somebody take sixty-five pictures for me, they just give me the picture, the picture right across there where it was. I went to a nine-one-one map and it showed me exactly on the trail where they were.
Okay.
I had to guess and I had to memorize.
Yeah, and I'm guessing that's what it is, it looks like it's all of that, but again, there's not a lot of information here to.
So, let's, we'll check in with Dorothy and get the, get the lowdown, how's that? Okay, good, uh, firing fast. I had something for the fire department here. Um, update for fire, W one has a check engine light showing inspection could not be completed. We are working on getting it to Freightliner Lebanon to get it corrected. Uh, generator, we are working with, uh, Brookfield Service to have yearly maintenance done on the generator. I don't know what generator or whatever, is that for the?
Those little light bulbs?
Yeah, I'm assuming it's like scene generators or something. We have a big one?
Yes, well, they do, I didn't know they would use it. I think they just got it hooked up last year, so.
Oh, well, that's good, approximately three hundred and twenty-five dollars per year for, for the one service call. We will submit a P O when we have an invoice for this work. Phone, the phone no longer has a block on it, thank you, Lisa. So, that was Wayne, uh.
Alright.
And library, I don't think there's anybody here with library stuff, do you know anything library wise, okay?
They had an R C A N training event last Friday night and they had eleven people, which I thought was pretty good. Um, and it went well, so that's all I know.
Okay, good. Constable Dan, Constable Dan, I like that, has a nice ring to it.
She get a shirt.
Lots of calls.
On.
Dogs, people, I went through a girl last Friday to investigate a rental property that. There's a mess, uh, complaints. Seems to be a lot of vehicles in town that are not in town vehicles.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on, I talked to the sheriff, the sheriff was here himself, James. Was there at least, uh, yesterday, so I actually had a chat with him and said, hey, can you see if we can move around and. Try to keep an eye on these vehicles and unregistered stuff and loud exhaust and just, it's just a lot of things going on, it seems like. So, he said he would, but hopefully maybe it'll help, just to, just to have the visibility of the sheriff's car around here.
Well, if you put three white fire in the town, that's a different spot.
I know, I know, um, okay, that was it, okay, zoning administrat- zoning Dan.
I tried to put all your, all yours together.
After we met with Patrick Shadef last week. The next day I got a call from the guy that I've been working with for the last three years at Royal Edge, it's real good, Mike. He gave us notice two weeks before that Patrick knew, when I was talking.
Really?
I was talking about Mike working with me on the black mold the next week. So then, the card he gave me had his direct line told me right to him. Well, I've never gotten a call back from him, I'm not very happy with that situation, I don't have who to contact now on these complaints.
This stuff doesn't, I don't know, I didn't feel like we got a good, but it's not resolved still at this point?
Absolutely not, if you went down there and looked at it, you'd be very upset yourself, whoever did the muddying on the corners of where the shower is. I've got a four-year-old granddaughter that can do better muddying than that.
I think you got a very good vibe on that whole thing, that's with Royal Edge and. We just constantly have issues.
There's constantly issues and it's either.
Nobody, and, and, I mean, I, I would say. Well, Patrick, oh, just get a hold of me, we'll take care of it.
But, but I mean, it's been, I mean, part of the reason why we set up the lease, the way we set it up with the library. Was specifically so that, you know, things in that building would be addressed.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, that's where I'm still a little, you know, I'm, I'm all for, you know, especially.
Getting free money to help the town, don't get me wrong.
Worried about how it's.
How it's gonna be handled, well, yeah.
Well, I guess you stay on it, Dan.
That's, that's all, I'm just trying to find somebody that's gonna be my next contact. The girl Theresa that was contacted Royal Edge, that was a supervisor. They won't return my calls either, so I don't know where to go.
If you need some help, I select more, I can call too.
That might be a good idea.
So.
Go to their office and get them.
Oh, no, I don't wanna do that because I don't want to.
He's a constable too, you know. Alright, well, I'll, I'll help you, Dan, I'll make a phone call.
Try to find out who's gonna be.
Okay, yep, that's fine, yep.
Yep.
No problem.
That's it.
Okay, uh, health officer, Dan.
Nothing.
We covered that already.
Okay, uh, maintenance.
Dan, no.
Do we have any maintenance stuff, Lisa?
No, just, um, the traffic sign, the traffic logic, I've emailed them and I've called and I haven't.
Which is on.
You want me to go after that?
If you want to, I mean, I'm not getting any luck, um.
And I called on the same subject, the traffic, I called the state for the permit to talk about the road, putting the. The digital signs on the road, well, he's out till the twenty-second, so, so I have a few more days and then I'll, I'll get back into that.
Good luck with that one.
Yeah, well, so gotta start somewhere, so, uh, any.
Just wait to have that conversation and you go round and round, cause that's what it is. I, I was on that barrier around probably three times.
I do have some connections with the state, so we'll see how far it goes around, we'll see, I have, I have, I have contacts through years of doing stuff.
Probably, most of them are retired or moved on.
But I could work through those guys and then I'll, I'll get somewhere eventually. Uh, anything else for maintenance? Okay, I T, anything?
I guess do the one more computer setup for Carrie.
Okay.
I got a fun, I've learned that I need to do it when I have a day off and she's not here.
Okay.
And I can't do it at night.
Well, it's only Friday, Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah. Yeah, but I work Fridays and Saturdays, Sunday I have my own.
Yeah, see, here you are.
So, I, I got that and then when I've done that and then I address all the things that aren't right, um, on the three new ones. Uh, then I'll go back to library.
Jesus, okay, alright, that, that sounds like a lot. If you need any help, call Zach.
Yeah. I can run wire.
Planning commission, Mike?
Hi, I do a planning commission update, uh, so, we, we met in February. Uh, we're, we're starting the, the town plan, we need N B D A come in or meet virtually with us. Uh, to talk about how to start the town plan update, which is due by next met, so we've got a lot of time. Uh, we also have Vermont Council of Rural Development, right?
Yes.
That was there. Talking about doing, what was that called, a community, uh, visit is what they call it. Uh, it's, it's like a, a, where, it would, it's not something we're looking at for now, it's. It's an opportunity where the, the Vermont Council for Rural Development comes in and has like a townwide gathering to gather like input from people in town, like. Like, what are your interests, what is your vision of growing, uh, all these different things and they come up with sort of avenues to. Succeed in trying to go after a couple of these things and there are a lot of examples given, um, she gave us some paperwork, we're sent us some. Things I didn't really look at yet, uh, but it's something, if, if we, if we have this opportunity, which we don't have it this year. It'd probably be next year or if, if they decide to include us, we, uh, we'd have to come to the select board and, and talk about. Um, budgeting like a town dinner to get people here, um, to, to be a part of this. Uh, I think that was advertising and dinner were the two town costs and they come in and they just do like a comprehensive like gathering and, and just. Of information to sort of help the town sort of guide like, like maybe we're thinking, here's what's important for the town, but we're not actually hearing what maybe is important to like. Seventy-five percent of the people because they don't come to the meeting.
It's a big survey.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, Mike Welch started the ball rolling on that, she just kinda gave us background information, told us the opportunity's not available for us this year. Uh, we didn't make any sort of motions on it, I don't believe, it was just sort of listen, um, so it's something we're thinking about down the pike maybe. But we're not there yet, uh, the one question we had as a commission was we noticed in the town report that we, uh, all have. I think it was maybe an error that we have one-year terms. You did bring that up, okay, I did read that.
Right, and I emailed you to ask you what the, um, terms for like last week. So, I need all the terms of everybody, so I think you all started at the same time.
Yeah, we did.
So, I think it's, so, that was.
So, then the question is, do we wanna stagger, do we want a commission where like we could have? Cause the question I have is if everyone is, this year is nominated, then twenty twenty-seven, everyone has to nominate, can we lose? You know how the select board is like stagger everything? Yeah, I, I would think stagger would make sense, is it, is it a three-year term?
Yeah, it's a three-year term.
So, I would.
Two-two long or.
Yeah, divide them and space them out that way.
Two-two, of course, what is that, three, math, math is a kicker, three two-two or something, two people in one.
We do what you're doing, we can go for it, yeah, I would stagger them over three years, that, I, I think that makes sense.
Decide their each, their terms and they're like, you know, that have.
What is everybody's terms now and then?
Doll.
Every year we just start.
First, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, is everybody?
We could say at our next meeting, July is when we nominate, um, the chair, things like that, we're meeting in April. Maybe we'll come up with, hey, you guys will be nominated this year, your three-year terms, I think we can come up ourselves, come up with a plan for that. For now, I don't believe, hey, did you nominate anyone this year, you didn't have to or no nomination?
We didn't do anything.
Yeah, so.
We didn't, we didn't know.
We're in good shape.
I think, I thought we, I think we said just stick with the list and then you gotta figure it out.
She said it's a perpetual thing to leave. But we'll come up with a plan to.
Lifetime, lifetime appointment there.
Yeah, uh, so that's the planning commission, can I go into the board stuff I have?
Uh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, cause, yeah, yep, good.
So, on that. You've got, I still have to send, uh, Lisa, I just don't connect you to those. Rearranging contractors, so the culverts, the rail bed, the parking area, that's gonna be pretty easy. The goal is to have it done by some time in the middle of the summer, culvert to get done in May, and then we're hoping that, um, Bogie or. Contractor doing the rail bed?
I can't. Which one?
With the rail bed itself.
Blue Mountain.
Blue Mountain, yeah, we're hoping Blue Mountain can do it in June, and then the June or July, then the trailhead, uh, sort of same thing. And then the last step is just putting signs in. So, I still have to get the three emails and get that kicked off, everything's been awarded, it just hasn't been like your official meeting. So, and so, and here's when you're gonna call if you have a problem, that sort of thing.
Okay, good.
The real estate transaction, uh, it's not in order yet, uh. But there's just like, you know, unexpected things coming up, um. The, um, town attorney is doing the title report, which I pushed back on with this date because we're gonna get a quick claim title. And I didn't see them need to really do too much research into it, but then they explained to me that, no, it's important, cause you don't wanna.
She didn't step on the bill for that.
Did she send a report, don't pay it until we get a report, that's what I like to do.
Alright, well, we need to connect, I think it was seven hundred dollars.
Okay, alright, she's got nine thousand dollars to do the title report, uh, write up quickly the. And deal with these two issues the sur- surveyor found, um, the two issues the surveyor found, one seems easy, I, I don't know the. And I, I probably have to work with her on it, but I want your advice before I go to the town attorney for things that I haven't discussed with her yet. Or, you know, I think we have the money to deal with these things, but I don't know what the approach is. So, on one, um, if you know what the Green Mountain Power property is, it's, uh, Tarryburg was road, right, was right through it, you know, Tarryburg Road. So, we're talking to the east of Tarryburg Road, there's a portion of the property where the land meets, uh, Elliot Siegel. Elliot and Stephanie Siegel, the, the brown, uh, house sort of down there next to the river. It's a short line, it's on a hundred fourteen feet wide, it gets to be really narrow on his property with the, the river approaching around it. Couldn't, we couldn't find in the deeds where there's a definition of where did that property ends. So, he, the, uh, surveyor is recommending a lot line agreement with the Siegels. I picture it as a like, we go out there, the surveyor says it should probably be right here and then we just hammer a couple of posts and agree, yeah, that's where it is and then. In our new deed, we reference where that location is.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that's the way this goes or is this something I need to get the town attorney involved in, my plan was to approach Elliot Siegel and say, do you know where this property line is? Our surveyor wasn't able to find it.
I think that would be a good first approach, maybe, and maybe see if they've done, well, you know, when, when the last time their survey was done, because like, might define two.
Because that, that's a land rezession that happened in the last ten years.
Yeah, that's, and I'm surprised that they're, they didn't find it on their end, but we're talking like the furthest part away from his property that's inaccessible. So, I think it's just the sort of handshake, we're hammering the post in here and mapping it and calling it a day.
I also did check with previous owners, see if he knows.
That'd be good too, I mean, it might help, but I think.
Who's the previous owner? Robbery. That's right here, bro, you know.
So, that's one small problem, not, I don't think that's a big one, that one, I think it's an easy one.
No, hopefully we.
So, the other problem is now west of Tarryburg Road where it used to cross, where the bridge used to be, where the dam used to be. Green Mountain Power, well, or whatever power company built this way back when, they own land on both sides of the river. Uh, the village side of the river, uh, there's that oatmeal, it's like a broken down.
That is owned by Paul Putton.
So, um, Green Mountain Powers maps show that as owned by.
The town, the town sold that property to him, I saw the deed, town meeting to.
Interesting, so our surveyor is saying that it's on both deeds, it's on the Green Mountain Power deed and it's on Putton's deed. And so, he was saying for that situation.
Green Mountain Power might have had a right of way deed.
Yeah.
That makes more sense.
Or water rights or something.
Putton owns the land and he's paid taxes on the land for many years.
So, that's ideal, um, that's actually the most ideal to, ideal thing to know, because the surveyor was suggesting a legal determination as ownership, which would have been.
And all I had to do was talk to Dan.
Yeah, well, talk to the legislature. Well, but I think if you could, if you can produce a deed for that property.
Well, but I think if you can if you can produce a deed for that property that would contradict what the surveyor.
So the question.
I'm surprised you didn't find it.
He found it. He did. He found both. He he was the basically both deeds reference that being as part of
The property.
The property. Ideally, I mean, it's a broken down building that the town shouldn't want. I mean, it was to me a part of the Green Mountain proper property that they didn't want, you know?
Yeah, the town.
As a risk, yeah.
Yeah, it's a risk and it has no use, right? The other part is kind of just.
No, the interesting thing is the town has a right-of-way.
Through there.
Through that property.
Yep.
Up through it's fifty feet.
Yep. There's actually, I think he noted two, one for the cattle pass.
Yes. The back and the back.
Right, right.
So that's actually, I'm glad I talked about that because I didn't want to go to, uh, the attorney with that one yet because I wasn't sure what where to go. But I guess if you can produce that deed.
I will hit with.
And then we could talk to Carolyn and say, listen. When we. When we draft up our deed with Green Mountain Power, so this property will exclude that portion. Because there's this.
Because it's already deeded to somebody else.
It's already deeded to someone else.
And that's the issue.
That's easy enough. That was quickly. That's easy enough, yeah. That was simple to fix.
Yeah, I like that. So that's that's, um, do we have any board stuff?
No, just waiting for the project to start.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Good, so you're doing is doing that project?
With three different contractors. Yeah.
One backed out, so somebody I didn't, one of them, so I don't even remember.
Well, yeah, because one of them wanted to do all three.
Yeah.
And he didn't want it if he didn't get all three.
I don't even.
So we're having, we're having, um, um, trying to remember. I got it. Uh, Barry's Forest Products is doing the trailhead. Blue Mountain's doing the rail bed. Hogan excavating for Cavett Vermont is doing the culverts.
Okay.
And he's planning on starting, I think, May fifteenth, but I I like to firm up a date with him. Uh, and then with Blue Mountain following after.
Okay, good. Good, good. All right. Thanks, Mike. All right, what else are we working on? So we have infrastructure. We got anything for infrastructure?
Yeah, so I think I've told Tristan, but the other you guys, I don't know if I've told you, the bid transpermit, um, it's supposed to go through. We're supposed to get an email any day now with that approved. Everything is lining up. Um, Nate, our engineer, has sent the plans to U S P A to approve the bid process. So the plans are about, uh, four hundred pages and they're on my desk, um, at my table, so you can view them.
A little bit of light green, huh?
Yeah, that's four hundred.
Um, so we, the plan is Nate says put them out to bid on March thirtieth. Um, there's a pre-bid conference on April sixteenth at four o'clock, which I'm hoping can be changed because I won't be here. I don't know if I need to be here.
You don't need to be. They just go over the project with everybody and anybody that wants to see it.
I think that would be late would probably be needing that.
Would be the ones to discuss it.
And then the bid due date would be April thirtieth at by two o'clock.
Okay.
So they want to do something that would open the bids at two o'clock, which is good, I think.
Probably want to do it March twenty-ninth because the thirtieth is a Saturday.
Oh, I don't know. It isn't just tentative, I think, what what I need from me.
And and if if he need, you know, if he needs somebody to access the building or whatever to run that meeting, I can, I maybe can help with that on the sixteenth.
Good job.
And, um, then. We have to report our ARCA spending. We spent that, what's it, forty thousand we spent to the, um.
Broad Van?
Yes.
Yep.
So I have to report that in the month of April. It's not open yet. So I set up a meeting with the V L C T ARCA person on April ninth at two thirty because I can help reporting it.
Okay, yeah.
Difficult.
Yep.
So I can help Larry if you could possibly come because you're gonna be the ultimate person for the ARCA money. So that's April ninth at two thirty.
Don't get excited. You don't get checked.
No.
And then Tristan spoke to N V D A about the grant possibility for the fire department roof. So, um, fourteenth I filled out the little application, um, to repair the roof and hoping.
Yeah, it says it should be pretty simple.
Eighteen thousand to help the fire department roof.
Yeah, so that was N V D A.
That remember that guy that was here? His name's Jesse.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
He was, yeah, and and he was like, hey, what do you have for projects and this and that? What he got us money for, oh, the map, the tax map.
Right, right.
He got the money for the tax map and then he called, he left me a message, I don't know, last week or something. He's like, hey, you know that private department thing? Did you do anything? I'm like, no, but he's like, oh, I think I can get you money. I'm like, okay, great. So let's do it.
V L C T also has some potential funding resources. I was perusing their website for fire for fire department specifically too. Might be something for the chief to look into, but anyway, that's great though.
Yeah, yeah, what the heck?
That's it.
Any updates on E V charging? Anybody heard anything on that? Energy, well, uh, the tree grant, didn't Steve meet?
He's been working with, um, he met with them again on Monday, the ARCA assistant, the woman from the state, so they.
Nice, good.
Over again, so.
Uh, are you aware that the knotweed grant was awarded to us?
Nope.
No.
I haven't seen even seen an email from Alan, actually.
Add it to our ongoing grades.
He said, Mike, we got the grant. I thought you should know I wanted to thank planning missions for support. And then he asked me a question about the G M P property and did some work on it.
Harley, add knotweed to the agenda for grant.
Knotweed?
Yeah, yeah, it sounds just like it, yeah.
It's a plant.
Japanese knotweed.
Not your weed.
Like tying a knot.
Where are your camera just at? Chill.
Not not with not with.
So how much did he get awarded?
He didn't say, uh, yeah, he didn't say.
Okay, I don't remember.
He said, uh, now the hardware starts, there won't be.
I don't remember how much. Actually, I don't remember. Do you remember? That grant for the knotweed.
Is this like some sort of invasive plant?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm like, I don't understand what this is.
I can tell you what he submitted.
Okay.
He requested six thousand dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was around five, but yeah, okay.
So I don't know if he was awarded the whole amount.
Okay.
How many budgeted money for that too?
Yeah, he said.
Three. Three thousand.
Budgeted three thousand. Uh, it said the hardware starts, physical work won't start until June or July, and he's looking for volunteers to help with the road. Nope.
My friend Dan here.
Dan, come on, Dan. Knotweed, Dan.
I think I'm allergic.
We were sold on this project to prevent it from going downstream.
Right, right.
Okay, I hunted the the chief Bogie's pit this year season. There's knotweed all the way down through where it joins the Connecticut River. We're not stopping anything.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a.
Procedure, it's a process.
It's a starting place. I think that's the, I guess, the point of it. We start at the top end of the stream.
Personal property, so you can do the town property here and have it on either side.
Yeah, well, maybe he's got a business opportunity ahead of him.
I did, a good salesman. Got three thousand out of us.
Yep.
Okay, anyways. Open to the public and other business.
I got I got one thing.
Okay.
So, uh, and I'm willing to take this on to do some research, but um, I found that setting up the sound system for town meeting is increasingly becoming more problematic.
There's a reason why we have what we have, you're saying?
Yeah, we we got what we paid for it, I think, but that's about it.
Yeah, we probably paid for it twenty years ago.
Yeah, right. I, yeah, or or more. Um, so I I'd like to do some research and try to find an improvement to that sound system.
That'd be great, yeah.
You know, looking at probably using, uh, like community, community.
We could probably get some grant money for it.
Mike, be right. I'll go after it. I'll I'll talk to what's his name in N V D A and see if he's got the.
Don't be, don't be using all that up.
We're we're grants grown, right? So, um, so I will, um, I'm gonna look into that, but I I think, um, my, I'm gonna look at a few different options. I think that there are a few different organizations, entities and otherwise that use the the gym space that could benefit from having somewhat more of a a more modern functioning sound system.
Okay.
So just something that I'm I've thought about, you know, and we can, we can look at what it costs and kind of go from there, but um, just because like, you know, it's it's literally like licking your fingers to put wires in, hopefully that they stay in place and, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's cool.
And some of the stuff is good. I mean, like the 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 remote microphone and that whole setup is still pretty good. But, you know, we could potentially get another microphone for that, tie it into a new system. So I'll look into it, but just something I was.
Okay, yeah, good.
Um, kind of research.
Yeah, okay, anything else? Larry, do you want to take on any projects?
I think I'm good.
Just checking. Uh, we need to set an agenda for our next meeting.
Um, so I will not be at the next meeting, which is the third, right? April third, I'm I'm traveling to Oklahoma for work, so.
Okay.
I will be out of town for that meeting.
Okay, no problem. Um, we can either move it around or just do it without you.
Just do it without.
Okay.
I'll be gone all week.
Okay.
Have have at it. Um, don't table anything. Don't assign me anything.
I don't know.
I know, it's great. Welcome to the meeting. You get all the extra work.
Uh, okay, anything else? So we're adding the other grant to the, we're gonna add that grant for the fire department. You added that. Uh, anything? Are we moving cemetery to next?
I guess so. I thought it was what it was about was the railroad entrance way for the new cemetery.
Right.
That was the discussion that Brent had said. So we put it to the next meeting and see if anything transpires.
Anything else? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay. I second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Good.